Well, good morning, everyone. And happy Tuesday to you. We are back with our very first in-person meeting for 2022. Today is Tuesday, March the 8th. And it's shortly after the 10 o'clock hour this morning. So we are calling our meeting to order. At this time, we will be honored with the Pledge of Allegiance and a word of invocation from our very own Director Kalanis Johnson from the Department of Planning and Development. Director Johnson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Commissioners.
Good morning.
Let us raise our hands, please. Dear God, we come before you this morning with bowed heads and humbled hearts. In the spirit of humility, I want to first of all just say thank you. Thank you for the blessings you continuously bestow upon us all. Thank you for blessing our commissioners. Thank you for blessing the county staff. Thank you for blessing the county residents and those who are in attendance today. In terms of today's meeting, even though there may be items that we disagree on, allow us to not be disagreeable toward each other. And finally, please continue to bless and watch over our young people that are involved in conflicts, both foreign and domestic. We ask these and other blessings in your loving Son, Jesus Christ's name. We pray and ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, I think it's taken just a little bit getting used to being back in person. We were virtual for so long and we haven't been in this Assembly Hall in quite a while. So I think there's a little bit of adjusting that's happening as I'm speaking. But guess what? We're back. We're here. And we're rocking and rolling in Rockdale County. We've got no special recognitions or anything like that. Executive Director Rollins? None at all? All right, well, we'll keep it moving. Commissioners, let's go to item number four, the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please. Approval of the minutes from February 8th, 2022, and March 1st of 2022.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There's no unfinished business and we'll keep it moving. Straight to the consent agenda. Item number seven. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're now down to item number eight, the regular agenda. And Executive Director Rollins, I'll yield to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first two items on the regular agenda is item 2022-118, a future land use case 2022-02, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by redesignating the future land use category of 1900 Dogwood Drive Southeast and 0 Old Covington Highway from light industrial to high-density residential to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. The item that goes with that is item 120, rezoning case 2022-04, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 1900 Dogwood Drive Southeast and 0 Old Covington Highway from M1 to RM to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. These are submitted for a second reading this morning.
Thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 119.
This is rezoning case 2022-03, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 1141 Old Salem Road Southeast from M1 to C2 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second read and to adopt this ordinance. I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 121 is future land use case 2022-01, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended. So as to redesignate property located at 1362, 1390 and 0 Rockbridge Road Northwest from the low-density residential future land use category to the light-industrial future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. And the item that goes along with it is rezoning case 2022-01, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 1362, 1390 and 0 Rockbridge Road Northwest from R1 and R3 to M1 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. These are submitted for a second reading.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Based upon the provisions as described in Rockdale County Section 238-4, I move to deny these amendments as presented.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Any comments?
I just believe that as much as we are all for economic development and seeing industry as much as can move into Rockdale County, there are certain things that impede the integrity of our entire community. And I do believe that this was going to be one of them. And especially that it's a warehouse. It wasn't anything that was bringing arts or culture or anything to the area. And so I just believe that it's in this entire county's best interest to deny this ordinance.
Well, and my concern had a lot to do with the road and the fact that it's just a narrow two-lane road and it's residential all the way around. It seemed... It didn't seem like a good fit.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Right, item 123 is rezoning case 2022-02, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 2721 Turner Road Southwest from R1 to CRS and a portion of 2905 Turner Road Southwest from R1/C to CRS to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second read and to adopt this ordinance.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 124, please.
This is rezoning case 2021-19, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 0 Gee's Mill Road Northeast from R1 to M1 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 125 is rezoning case 2021-20, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 2966 and 0 Flashholt's Road Southwest from AR to R1 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second read and to adopt this ordinance.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 126 is rezoning case 2021-16, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 2709 Denard Road Northeast from AR to R1 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions?
This is a neighborhood when I drove down Denard Road. It's all very large properties on either side of this particular spot. And I had several citizens contact me about their concerns for having a subdivision put in the middle of this AR zoning.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 127 is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, Georgia, approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the Development Authority of Rockdale County.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 128 is a resolution requesting that the local delegation for Rockdale County, Georgia, present to the General Assembly certain local legislation relative to the salaries of the judges of the Superior Court of Rockdale County Judicial Circuit and for other purposes. It's also my understanding this morning that Executive Director Mark Lewis has a presentation for the board as well.
Okay, which one should we take? Do we follow with item 128 and then go to Executive Director Lewis? Or should we yield for him?
Either way, Mr. Chairman, you can vote on this and then we can move on to Director Lewis.
Okay. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on item 128?
I move to approve this resolution as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Executive Director Lewis, our Finance Director, CFO. Come on up, Director Lewis.
Absolutely. Good morning, Gordon.
Good morning.
The salaries of the judicial officials have not had a legislative increase since 2002. However, some officials have received longevity and COLA adjustments similar to regular employees. The board asked that we include these salary increases and employee market study during the FY '22 budget process. But my recommendations at the time was not to implement because of the budget constraint and let us reevaluate it mid-year. Two things have happened to allow us to consider this resolution at this time. First, we had allotted a portion of the ARBA dollars for revenue loss for FY '21. As we near closing the books for FY '21, we do not need as much of that allocation as initially thought. The second thing that has occurred is that the federal government will now allow as much as $10 million to be used for revenue loss. In our allocation, we've only used 4.4 million. The total amount of the increase for all the judicial salaries for mid-year implementation is $127,917. I'm recommending that the board assess the resolution at this time. I will also be recommending in a future meeting that the board accepts a market study for employees as well.
Thank you, Executive Director Lewis. At this time, Director Rollins, what is our point from this presentation from our CFO?
So if there is any discussion from the board at this time, or we can move into public comment.
Okay. Commissioners, any discussion regarding the presentation from our CFO? I'll start with you, Commissioner Washington.
So you're recommending that we... Of course, we just passed the resolution for the judges. But you're also recommending that we look at the market study from...
We'll be looking at a mid-year implementation of the market study in the upcoming meetings.
And could you... I know what a market study is, but maybe not everybody would know what a market study is.
Yes, so a market study is taking a look at the classifications of all throughout the county and looking at neighboring organizations to ensure that our salaries are in line with those neighboring counties so that we are not consistently lower than expectations in terms of job salaries.
Is there any thought on what this is going to do with our need to keep our millage rate the same? The ability to roll it back at this time?
Absolutely. So while we're able to meet the needs of this market study because of the influx of funds from the federal government, that in order to maintain those salaries, we will have to increase the millage rate going forward. From a general fund perspective, have the dollars to maintain those salaries.
And how does this affect the sheriff's deputies, which we know that they are in number 60 out of 63 in the metro Atlanta area? How would this affect them?
They are also included in the market study and we'll see an increase in their salaries as well.
Is there any ability with this market study to get them some kind of incentive? Like I've just saw that DeKalb County is incentivizing. I think the city of Conyers is doing an incentive for their police officers. I think Clayton County is doing one. Fulton County, is there any way that we can look at doing an incentive to keep our sheriff's deputies also?
We can try to take a look at that. I know there's a number of efforts from a local and state perspective to incentivize some of the sheriff's department. We can definitely take a look at that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
So I just... You know, we've looked at this for several years. It's appalling to me that it's been 20 years since our judges have received a raise. That's just, you know, that's just amazing to me. And again, to me, that says previous administrations didn't look at it and now it's kind of left us to address that issue. And so I'm glad that we're addressing it. It's definitely something that needs to happen for our judges because if you look at their salaries compared to others in the metro area, they're very much lower.
Thank you, Executive Director Lewis, for your presentation. I will make comment that on... There's two parts to what he just presented to us this morning. Number one, I echo the sentiments of both of the commissioners regarding the fact that it's been 20 years since there's been a significant increase in terms of our judges' salaries and many of the elected officials in Rockdale County. 20 years. But the second part is the most alarming part, and I must use this word, is very embarrassing. When I think about public safety, particularly over the last couple of years of what we've had to encounter during this pandemic. But it doesn't stop with just public safety. If you paid attention to his presentation, he talked about all Rockdale County employees. I do understand that we have to be competitive in this market when we're trying to attract qualified and competent talent, when we're trying to retain qualified and competent talent. So this is a major leap forward. This is a huge step in the right direction. And I believe that a part of this proposal speaks to the fact that no employee, if this goes in the direction we want it to go, then here in Rockdale County, there shouldn't be an employee making less than $15 an hour. That's the market and that's the climate that we're in. Let me break it down just a little bit more. Employers are now faced with the situation where you have to tolerate and have patience and deal with a little bit more than what you normally would have to do in a very competitive market. What am I saying? I'm glad you asked. Now folks have what? Plenty of options. They could go to other places and have other alternatives in terms of employment. If we want to have the best qualified and competent talent so we can deliver the best services to our citizens, guess what we've got to do? We've got to pay them. Otherwise, they're going to leave. They're going to leave the sheriff's office. They're going to leave the fire department. They're going to leave parks and recreation and every other county department. I applaud the efforts of Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. This is certainly a step in the right direction. Thank you to our CFO, our Department of Talent Management, and our executive staff for compiling and doing the research and bringing this information. And when I think about the nearly 1,000 Rockdale County employees in this very tight, tough, and challenging climate, trying to figure out how to put food on their table, how to pay the rent, how to make the mortgage, how to buy a band uniform or a cheerleading outfit, how to send a kid on a field trip for $50. Anybody other than me had a kid to wake up on the day of the field trip and say, Daddy, I need $50? Anybody other than me didn't have that $50 once upon a time? Or maybe you surrendered your gas money, your haircut money, your lunch money, and gave that baby the $50 so they can what? Participate. This is what we're talking about. We have to take care of our employees. One more time, it's embarrassing to know that 20 years since the judicial community in Rockdale County has received an increase. It's even more embarrassing to know that. We're behind the eight ball of that statistic number you mentioned about where the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office ranked in this region. It's crazy. Let me just tell you. Rockdale County is one of the 11 metropolitan counties that make up the Atlanta Regional Commission. What does that mean? We are part of metropolitan Atlanta. If we don't pay people, it's going to be a mass exodus. We can't no longer... We can't no longer take employees for granted. Now, I just want to say again to the Board of Commissioners, thank you, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. This is forward-thinking and thinking about what we have to do in the days ahead. And the third piece that came out, and I'll wrap it up on this, is the question the commissioner asks. What is the impact on the millage rate? Well, you heard it. It was clear. If you want quality, guess what you've got to do? You've got to pay for it. Thank you, Director Lewis.
I had one other thought, too. You know, we can't really compete with private industry. We know that. But we do have to compete with other municipalities and counties around us.
You're absolutely right, Commissioner. And we... I heard from the chief deputy this morning. And we're continuing to lose, and from Talent Management on yesterday. We're losing personnel left and right. I talked to Chief Mack, who's here. Last week, she told me about the... You know, they've described it across the nation as the great resignation. Well, it's real and it's happening. And it's real and happening in every industry. Even the local educators at our local schools. Schools, districts are competing for talent in the classroom. They can hardly find bus drivers. They can hardly find lunchroom and cafeteria workers. We can hardly hire someone to hold a stop sign as a school crossing guard. If we don't pay people what they're worth and valued and stop penny-pension in Rockdale County, we're not going to have anybody performing work and delivering the services. So I'm so glad that my colleagues and I are standing on the highest point in Rockdale County and sounding the alarm and making the announcement. Commissioner Washington?
Yeah, the other part of that is that, you know, we've said that we have to keep the millage rate where it is. And some people may think that, well, we can cut places in the budget. And I want to challenge anybody to go through that budget because we went through it with a fine tooth comb looking for ways that we could squeeze an extra dollar and move things. Our budget was very, very tight, especially at the millage rate that it is now, almost to our detriment. So we've done the best we can and I don't see us being able to do another rollback rate. And I'm sitting here, unless something happens, unless, you know, we get something big happening.
Commissioner, the thing about the seat of leadership, you often find yourself in a tight position.
Right.
You have to think about the future. You have to think about the opportunity and being able to seize the moment. We're here right now. And it was 20 years since the last time the judges received a raise.
Amen.
And the competitiveness of our, not just our public safety personnel, but all Rockdale County employees. So to me, it's not a debate. I'm prepared to stand where I need to stand as it relates to the millage rate.
Yes.
Because we've got to stick up for the future of this county. And changes have to be made. Leadership makes it possible that you have to entertain some of those people who are going to come forward who disagree. And guess what? That's all right. I like the prayer that Director Johnson gave. We can be... We can disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable. I think we've talked enough on this and I'm excited about the days ahead. And I'm sure the employees who are listening and watching, and more importantly, I think even the citizens who are listening and watching this broadcast understand that we have to have public safety. We want quality parks and recreation and all of our government operations to flow the way they need to flow. And in order to do that, we've got to have talented staff. At this point, I want to go into public comment. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a few cards coming your way, so I'll read while Chief Cave is approaching you.
Thank you, Chief.
As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an inappropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you, Director. Mr. George Kellacek is our first speaker for this morning. Come on up, Mr. Kellacek.
Good morning. Nice to see everybody's smiling faces.
Good morning.
To the Rockdale County citizens, the Board of Commissioners. Water is our most precious item. A forward-thinking narrative is being presented this morning from I of the Taxpayer Association and the Haynes Watershed Foundation, which has been established as a 501(c)(3) to provide our commitment as citizens to protect our water resources in Rockdale County. 8.1 million gallons of treated water are utilized by Rockdale County and the city of Conyers taxpayer and citizens every day. Of this 8.1 million gallons, 36% is unaccounted-for or unbillable water, while the national average is 16%. If we reduce to 16% the national average, this would provide 1.6 million gallons of billable water at $4.35 per gallon, which is the minimum rate. That would provide over $7 million in revenue in a year to this county and $211 million in 30 years. Chemical costs are .0008 cents per gallon. And if we took this $1.6 million and found it, we could account... That accounts for $1.39 per day, $50,850 per year, or 1.5 million gallons in 30 years that we could recover. Yet, our minimum rates in water have increased 74% in nine years, from $3.25 to $4.35, while the minimum sewerage rates have increased from 4.72 to 8.35, a 56.5% increase. We are here today as the Haynes Watershed Foundation to assist this administration and all the citizens of Rockdale County to get back down to 16%. It's imperative. This is the most precious resource we have. If we don't have water, we do not have economic development. This foundation has been in front of federal, state, and local legislators and also the EPD and EPA to help this administration. We ask for additional meetings with you all. We have the strategies ready to go for you and we're willing to work with the water and sewerage departments to get this problem corrected. So thank you very much. Take care and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellacek, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I will make mention, Commissioners, I'm not sure if the sheriff's office or the city police, for that matter, they used to have a program back in the day called Police police for that matter, they used to have a program back in the day called Police Ride Along, where citizens could actually get in the police car and ride for a few hours with a patrol officer, a police officer, or a sheriff's deputy, to kind of get a bird's eye view of what really goes on on a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday night in the local community.
They wouldn't let me ride along.
Well, let me just tell you, Commissioner, let me tell you where I'm going with this, because I was thinking about Mr. Kellacek's presentation and the effort to help this administration. I believe Director Bogan, if you and Deputy Director Jamison was creative enough to come up with a way, and I know we have the wonderful Citizens Government Academy that is now exposing citizens to what's really going on, but if folks really had an opportunity to see the state of our current infrastructure, the pipes, and the fact that years and years and years, and I think in stormwater, it's been 40 years of neglect.
Yep.
So to get back to that percentage that he was talking about, it's going to take a lot of what? Money. And it's going to take a lot of what? Time. Our employees who go out in the field and respond to water main breaks almost on a weekly basis, or some type of spill due to aging, obsolete, and antiquated infrastructure that's running through the city of Conyers in Rockdale County, there's a high cost to that, because for years and years, no one addressed it. So we certainly do appreciate the support on every level, local, state, and federal. And we're moving in the right direction to get some of those things addressed, and infrastructure. He's right, it does have a direct impact on economic development. We certainly can't recruit new business and industry in here, or those that are existing can't expand. If they require a need for more water or additional resources, then we're limited if we don't address those infrastructure issues that exist, and that they've existed for quite a long time. Commissioner?
What I like about the Haynes Watershed Foundation though, is that it gives us another entity that may be able to help us when we're looking for solutions to the problems, another, another advocate when we are applying for grants, another, another voice when we are talking to our federal, our federal legislators, our state legislators, everybody, because we too have gone to EPA, we've gone to our senators, our congressmen, we're always talking about our infrastructure problems. So this would give us another voice, and, because we're all looking for the same thing, and so maybe it would give us another, another level of advocacy in the community.
And I think you're right about that. You know, we know there's major issues with our infrastructure, and we applied for ARPA funds through the state specifically for infrastructure, and we did not receive that, those funds, that grant, so we've, we've got to, you know, we've got to use all the resources that we have.
It's certainly a valid and real issue. You talk to any of the residents that live over in Millstead, they will tell you, I don't know if anybody ever experienced ever taking a shower, and all of a sudden, you lathered up with soap and bubbles, and the water stops. Or perhaps you was cooking your Sunday meal, or washing your clothes, and the water stopped. Because Millstead is one of the oldest historic communities in Rockdale County. The infrastructure has been neglected before we was even born. So I hats off to Rockdale Water Resources and the leadership team of getting out on the ground, responding, and doing everything they can. But what we're really hearing is that the help we need is resources, money. We don't need, we don't need, I don't need anybody else to tell me that we got a break in the pipe. I already know the pipe broke. I need some money to do what? Fix the pipe. And better yet, I don't really want to fix it. Let's replace it. Because the pipe they used in 1920 is not the pipe they're using in 2022. I'll get off the pipe subject. Let's go to the next speaker, Mr. Jason Witcher. Come on up, Mr. Witcher.
But you did leave us with the bubble visual for the rest of the day.
You, with that soap?
Yeah, on you, on you. We left with that for the rest of the day?
It's just kind of amazing how certain things just stand out to you, Commissioner. I don't know how you, I'm moving on, you still in the shower and no water. George Kellacek, would you get with her after the meeting? Jason, so glad to have you.
I was more concerned about that Sunday dinner.
Talk to us, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners. Most of you guys probably know me from my business here in town, I'm a financial advisor with Edward Jones, but I'm not here to talk to you about that this morning. I'm wearing a different hat, or shirt for that matter, quite literally. I want to talk about the Walk of Heroes. Normally I would poll the audience to see how many veterans we have, but I don't want this person to throw anything at me. So I'll just make my point with it. The point is, is that there's really only 1% of the population who ever served in the United States military. That, that's just a fact. That being said, one thing I want to thank the county for, many years ago, an effort was put together to form the Walk of Heroes up at Black Shoals Park. This obviously was a great cost for multiple people throughout. How we maintain a lot of those costs now are through different fundraisers. And what I'm here to talk about this morning is the fundraiser that we're having, it's actually a golf tournament that's taking place on March 25th at the Cherokee Run Golf Course right here in Conyers. We want to invite the public out, there's sponsorship opportunities for holes, or, and/or just coming out to enjoy a round of golf, or there's multiple people. I've got a couple flyers here that are on the Board of Directors, myself included, that they can talk to to make any kind of monetary donations that go to the park. The park itself, as you guys know, you've all been out there, memorializes each of the armed conflicts that the United States has been on, and really pays homage to that. And as a veteran myself, I can tell you, those type things really mean the world to all of us to be able to come out and go to. So we want to keep the park pretty, we want to keep the park as a premier attraction to Rockdale County, so we ask for any support that we can get.
Thank you, Mr. Witcher, thank you Jason so much, and we appreciate the Walk of Heroes and all of the work that you all do here. We have a wonderful memorial park out at Black Shoals, and he used the word premier, and it is really, if you've not had an opportunity to go and visit the Walk of Heroes, it's really a beautiful park. It's a great place. I always like to encourage families to take their young people and encourage, educate them about the various different, different armed services. And it's just a peaceful and serene park. We're so proud to have it in Rockdale County. We have a lot of golfers, and when you start talking about your golf tournament, I saw the smile on Major Katie Johnson's face back there. He's an avid golfer, and you may want to get with him after the meeting and see whether the Sheriff's Office be interested in putting a team together. We, Commissioners, we do have a team that will be representing the BLC. We were attending the meeting last night, and it's not too late, Commissioner, for you to, we know you have a set of clubs, it's not too late. They've got somebody already for the ballpark.
I think there may be a competition between Rockdale, I think maybe you need to have two groups possibly.
Two groups?
Two groups, have a competition there. That way you can, more sponsorship and a little friendly competition.
The more the merrier.
Commissioners, right.
He's certainly a salesman. Give the Walk of Heroes a round of applause. We certainly do appreciate, I mean, when we really salute and pay homage to our local veterans here in Rockdale County, it means everything in the world. I want to just take a quick moment and yield to Chief Cave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we have some visitors from the Sheriff's Office that are here today, and it's my understanding, and I just want to give an opportunity. Did you want an opportunity? I know we generally don't give the red cards to employees, but did you want an opportunity to speak to the board, or are you good this morning?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much, Major Johnson, just wanted to offer that up.
Thank you Chief for that observation. I know that the major and his colleagues came in a little shy of the presentation from our CFO about the good news regarding our employees moving forward. So certainly, I would encourage you to check with the CFO at the close of the meeting, so you can get all of the details. This meeting is recorded, so everything that was presented is there. I always think it's important that when you're repeating stuff, you repeat it like it is. Because a lot of times you talk, if you have a problem with your foot, you're going to go see a podiatrist and not a cardiologist. So you want to make sure you go into the right source for information. Are you following me?
I follow you.
Okay, just wanted to say that.
Handsome.
Absolutely, not that you have a foot problem, I'll just.
I do, but my cardiologist is, is better looking than my podiatrist.
So you, so that means you are, you're asking your heart surgeon about foot problems. Commissioner, you're going to have to get it together. All right. Okay, we're going to move now into board comments, and I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Washington.
Okay, good, good morning again. First of all, I would like to send a very heartfelt and sincere prayer for the citizens of the Ukraine at this time. You know, I don't think most of us saw this coming, and, and to see what's happening there is almost a slap in the face of everything that we hold near and dear in this country. And I have been praying for them nightly, and will continue to do so. The next thing is a little bit lighter. We do, are having our small business mixer tonight at the Reserve, and it is our own chairman, Mr. Oz Nesbit, who will be our featured guest, so please come out and, and mix and mingle with us. Bring your business cards, or now everybody's doing those, those, where you, you just.
Electronic.
Yeah, the, the QR cards, where you just put it over the, the QR code and everything comes up, so bring those. We always have a good time, very informative. It's open to everybody, so please come and, and fellowship with us.
Commissioner, I apologize, the address and time?
The time is 6:00 to 9:00. The address is the Reserve on 138, next to Hobby Lobby. That's as good as you can get with me with addresses. The Reserve on 138, from 6:00 to 9:00, next to Hobby Lobby. Last week, we, Commissioner Williams and I went to ACCG training in Tifton, and one of the classes that I took was debt financing, because I was very, very, very interested in all of the ways that we could use to service debt. Come to find out, one of the most utilized forms of debt service now, because of all of the benefits, is a public facilities authority. Come to find out that several jurisdictions now are using the public facilities authority to finance their large items such as courthouses. Chatham County just did a $90 million courthouse renovation just, just for their courts. It was $90 million. Henry County just enacted their public facilities authority legislation, and their target, their target project will be a courthouse. So I do believe that we're on the right track, and hopefully we can still get this finance authority paid for, because as stated to me before, it's, we have to pay for these projects. They're more expensive than they ever have been before, but the finance authority gives us the opportunity to have a coupon. It's like going to the store and getting a loaf of bread, and either paying full price or using your coupon to get the dollar off, and still getting the same loaf of bread. So I do want to, did want to say that about our public facilities authority and the debt finance. Also, Chairman, as I was sitting through the debt finance class, was thinking that maybe this would be something that we should present to the public, because we, as this board, like this, this race, it hasn't been done in 20 years. The courthouse hasn't been addressed in 40 years. There are other things that we're going to have to, that we're doing as a board, that we're introducing to the, to the citizens, and maybe the citizens need to hear all the things that we're hearing, so that they can be as informed on the decisions we're making as we are. They get the information about debt financing and the different avenues, and they get the information about just, just different things that we're hearing to make the decision, and then maybe they'll, that will help them understand why we're making the decisions that we're making. So just maybe a, a town hall on debt financing and the different ways that we can finance debts, and the pros and cons to them. So that would be something I'd be interested in bringing to the public.
All right.
Um, let's see. We just passed a, a revenue bond from our Development Authority, and I did want to talk about that a little bit. That is for a senior housing project, that is to help with senior housing. It's going to be near the hospital, so of course that's a great location, but I'm very, very proud of the things that our Development Authority are doing to help senior housing, this allow them, the, senior housing to be affordable, and to keep things in our community. So those are the things that I have for Sherri Washington, point one. We always know that we're going to go back.
All right, point one, all right. Commissioner Williams?
So, you know, I always take a few notes after you've spoken too, and so thinking about the Ukraine, we have a young lady at our church who spent 18 months in the Ukraine, and she is just devastated because of the people she met, and the people she knows there, and the things that are happening. And so, you know, we definitely need to continue to keep them in our thoughts and prayers, and I know there have been some avenues about helping out financially, but making sure that you are actually working with an agency that will actually get the, the items to those people, and not keep them themselves. So this morning, before our board meeting, believe it or not, I was someplace else. That's an amazing feat. But I was over at the Conyers City Police Department, and our stepping up initiative, the program that we have funded for this year, Opening Doors to Recovery, has actually, actually come to pass, and they are getting their training this week. And so, the, the ones in the training are called Community Navigators. One of them is a viewpoint, well, they're, all three of them are Viewpoint Health employees that we have contracted with, but that way they can get their benefits and, and all of that. One of them is a clinician who works on this, on this team. One of them is a peer, and I have met him, Chris Jackson, I think is his last name. He is, he went through one of our Accountability Court programs, and when he finished, and he knew he was finishing with the program, he kind of was nervous about now what? Because, you know, once they go through the program, then, you know, sometimes there's not the support they need. So he got his peer support certification, and is now an employee of Viewpoint Health, and he will be, he has someone who has, he is somebody who has lived experience and can relate to the people that are being stopped by law enforcement. And then the third person of that team is a family member, somebody who, this is also a certified peer specialist program for family members who have members of their family who have had encounters with law enforcement, addiction, mental health issues, all of that. So it's a three-person team. The people doing the training are Bill Carruthers, who, this is a program that was additionally done in Chatham County and some of the surrounding counties, and it was spearheaded by Nora Haynes. done in Chatham County and some of the surrounding counties, and it was spearheaded by Nora Haynes, who was at the time with the Georgia NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, and the National NAMI. And Bill has also been with those two organizations. So Bill and Nora are doing the training today, because they were both in on the training for the very first group that did it. In fact, Bill was actually the peer navigator during that time when it was going on in Savannah. So I had a chance to just greet them this morning, for the, this was their first day of training, and just, you know, just to see their enthusiasm about what they're about to, about. And, you know, and I think, I tried to impress them that this is not a program, and it's not about the data. Though, both of those things, the structure of a program and the numbers are always important, but you can't ever forget that every number is a person, and that each person, this is an opportunity to provide these intense wraparound services with three people coming from different perspectives, and can help them navigate, and that's why they're called navigators, navigate through the resources available, the supports each person needs, and, you know, this is about people. Because I think, I can't tell you how many times I've said, when you stabilize one person, you stabilize their family, and when you stabilize families, you stabilize communities.
Absolutely.
And so I'm really, really excited about this actually getting started. It's something I, we have been talking about for a couple of years. We funded it in our budget for this year, and it's finally happening. So, it is a very big deal. As far as the ACCG classes that I took last week, one of them was on incentives for economic development, and the, one of the presenters is a bond attorney, and he spoke specifically about public facilities authorities, and how that is extremely beneficial to communities. And also in that class was Chairwoman Carlotta Harold from Henry County, and they have just adopted, or passed, or whatever the terminology, a public facilities authority specifically for a courthouse. So, that was interesting to talk to her. So then the last thing I had is it's Women's History Month. I know.[804.43][804.43](laughing) And so, you know, I've been thinking for a week about, I could do some research and look at women, you know, well-known women in history, and there's a lot of them. But I thought I would take it more personally today, and talk about my grandmother and my mother, who for me really were historical. My grandmother, and this is my mom's mom, my grandmother divorced her husband in the thirties because he was an alcoholic and abusive. Now, that alone, in the nineteen thirties, that was almost unheard of, that a woman would stand on her own and say, I'm not gonna tolerate this. She had three kids. She went to work. She was a single mom working in the thirties, the forties, the fifties, that was just unheard of. And then, you know, after she retired, she was always taking classes and learning new skills and traveling, and I remember at her funeral, thinking, this is my grandma's legacy. She's a strong woman, but she never stopped learning. And my mother carried on that same kind of legacy. I can remember her coming home so mad, because she had tried to get a credit card with just her name on it, and she could not. She couldn't do it without my dad's signature. And, you know, women were not allowed to be financially self-sufficient at that time. But my mother was always learning, and I always have to laugh when I think about growing up, her favorite magazine, this was her relaxation, was to read Scientific American. And I remember as an adult thinking, I think I'll open it up and see what it's, this is way not my thing. But, but my mother was, she could have, she could talk to you about black holes, she could talk to you about all kinds of scientific things, because, and yet, she had just an associate's degree, which she earned after I was married.
Wow.
She started on a bachelor's, but then my father became very ill, and she, you know, did not, didn't have a chance to finish that, but, but she, she was always learning. And, you know, lifelong learners are what we need to be. The more you know, the more you realize that you don't know much, because there's so much in this world to learn, and so much to do, that I hope that's a legacy that I can leave to my children and my grandchildren, is that you've just gotta keep learning. You've gotta keep looking outward, and, you know, keep taking classes, keep watching documentaries, watching the science, you know, whatever it is, whatever your method of learning. Get out and do it. So those are my comments.
Alright, Commissioner. Alright, Commissioner Washington?
I do wanna give the, the address for, thank you Director Lewis, for the Reserve. It is fifteen oh three Highway one thirty-eight, which is next to Hobby Lobby.
Make a right turn.[1058.99][1058.99](laughing)
But my Women's History, and this is going to surprise most, but my Women's History for today is the nine founders of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority was the first intercollegiate African-American female sorority in, in the history of the, of the United States. It was founded on January fifteenth, nineteen oh eight, on the campus of Howard University in Washington DC. Its founders were among fewer than one thousand Negroes enrolled in higher education institution in nineteen oh eight, and the twenty-five women who received their Bachelor's of Arts degrees from Howard University between nineteen oh eight and nineteen eleven. So out of a thousand African-Americans, these were twenty-five women that stood up and decided to do something that we all stand on their shoulders. They had nine juniors and seniors, and they constituted the initial core group of founding members, seven sophomores, and we won't, the original nine members were Anna Esther Brown, Bula Burke, Lily Burke, Marjorie Hill, Margaret Flack Holmes, Ethel Hatchman Lyle, Lavenda Norman, Lucy Digstow, and Marie Wilford Taylor. So I do want to acknowledge the founders of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority for my Women's History, and I'm being recorded, so everybody who knows me knows how big that is.
Well, let the record reflect, that a member of Delta Sigma Theta just really acknowledged the AKAs and the founders of that great sorority. Does that conclude?
Yes, that's it, that's all I can do, it's time to go to bed.
Alright. Well, in the spirit of Women's History Month, I really appreciate what both Commissioners shared. You know, I've talked multiple times about the most influential people in my life were three women, my mother, my grandmother, and my dear Aunt Maddie. Strong women. It's easy for me to just point out the fact that women get things done. It's clear, women, women get the job done. That's evident in the workforce we have here in Rockdale County, that's evident throughout our community. Every other year, we have a program acknowledging the achievements and accomplishments of women called Rockin' Women in Rockdale County. This world, you know, being from Augusta, the home of the late, great Godfather Soul, James Brown, one of his most famous songs was, "This is a Man's World." But if you listen closely, he goes on to say, "Alandra, it wouldn't be nothing without a woman or a girl." So women have certainly made their mark, and they continue to make their mark all across our country and all across our world, from the White House to your house. So we certainly, let's give all of our women a round of applause.[1274.83][1274.83](applause) I certainly don't wanna live in a world without women, I'm gonna just put it out there like that, Major Johnson, I don't know about you, but I, I need to be surrounded with us, some women making things happen and doing what needs to be done, absolutely. I do wanna talk about our upcoming State of the County Address, will take place on Thursday, March the thirty-first, at the end of this month. We will be having our annual State of the County Address, and we will be certainly announcing all of the work that our county has done over the last twenty-four months, and the, within the last twelve months, and we will also be announcing some of the things that you can look forward as we're focusing on forward-thinking in Rockdale County. We've made major strides over the last twelve months, Commissioners, but we've got some good things that are on the brink of happening in our community, and we're gonna highlight those things, those people, and those places in Rockdale County that make us the best county in the state of Georgia. I'm excited about it, so don't forget to mark your calendars, and Public Relations will be broadcasting the State of the County Address. It will be running on Channel twenty-three for those who are not able to actually come out and attend the event. Moving on, I wanna talk about something that is, I'm a super news watcher, and I pay attention to what's going on in our region. I just wanna make mention to this to all of our citizens in Rockdale County, and as I start off, I wanna say thank you to all of our public safety divisions, our emergency management agency, certainly to the City of Conyers Police Department and the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. To me, as Chairman of the County, there is absolutely nothing more important than public safety. As I pay attention to what's happening in other counties and municipalities throughout this region, crime is, is moving, and I want to say to our citizens to be vigilant, be alert, pay attention whether you're just pumping gas, whether you're going to church, entering the church, or going back out to your car. If you're out at the grocery store, at a movie theater, hair salon, barber shop, anywhere, you have to be alert of your surroundings. Some of the bold acts that we're seeing across this metro region, and whereas Rockdale County, we boast about being one of the safest counties in the state of Georgia, but we're not exempt from people doing crazy and egregious things. We have to be alert of our surroundings. So I just wanna put that out there, and as we thank our public safety division and our public safety workers for the work that they do, we have to do our part, because every citizen doesn't have a policeman assigned to them, or fireman assigned to them walking around the community. You have to be alert, and what are some of the basic things you can do? Make sure you get your surveillance system at your home. Make sure you get you an alarm at your home. Do what you need to do to protect yourself as a citizen, because you have to be smart. We're living in different times and a different place now, and we can't just think, you know, when you watch the news reporter, Director Gumman, they, they interview, they put the microphone in somebody's face, and they're interviewing at the scene of an incident, and the person says, "I can't believe it happened in my neighborhood." I'm like, "What?" Well, let me remind you, there's people that live in your neighborhood. That's the reason we have police, that's the reason we have fire services, because things are gonna happen, people are gonna do crazy things. What I'm saying to the folks here in Rockdale, be alert, be mindful, pay attention to your surroundings, check on each other, particularly your family and your loved ones, make sure that you're doing, and particularly our young people. Our young people are very, very naive, and they oftentimes don't have the same level of alertness, particularly the younger ones. So make sure that you're thinking on behalf of them as well. I wanna yield a moment, our Fire Chief, Chief Mack, come on up, I think there's something you want to say?
Just in the spirit of...
Well, come on up, come on up, since you, since you, right, you're a woman, and you the Fire Chief, let her come on through.
Just wanted to say that.
Wait, yes, you're gonna say it, I want you to say it the proper way, Madam Chief.
In the spirit of Women's History Month.
Yes, ma'am.
It is not firemen, it is firefighter.
Firefighter.
It is not policemen.
I stand corrected.
It is police officers.
Police officers.
Okay.
Okay, male and female.
Male and female.
Okay, alright, thank you. I stand corrected by Fire Chief, let's give the Fire Chief a round of applause.[1584.47][1584.47](applause) Reminds me of, I don't know who sung that song with the lyrics that said, "Let's straighten it out." She, she straightened it out, didn't she?[1598.71][1598.71](laughing) Absolutely. Well, we certainly do appreciate Chief Mack and all of the members of our Rockdale County Fire and Rescue for the fine work that they do as well. You talked about that magazine that your mother used to...
Scientific American.
Scientific American, you really poked a memory in my mind. I remember my grandmother, she, she used to love, anybody other than me remember the Jet magazine? The little Jet magazine? And I, as a boy, I loved the Jet, the Jet magazine.[1635.33][1635.33](laughing) The Jet magazine, I learned, I actually learned, I learned who Billy Dee Williams was as an actor and a model, because I never forget the, you know, I think probably Director Sanders, that's when I fell in love with the color purple, because I can remember seeing Billy Dee Williams on the cover of the Jet magazine, and he was so smooth and suave, and he had on the beautiful colors of purple and gray, and he just distinguished, this is way back now, and way back in the, you know, and yeah, that hair, Director Kelly, you're right, that hair, it was so slick, it was so slick, and then his voice, he had a really, and Billy Dee Williams, matter of fact, is still alive, he's very much alive, but we were talking about the Jet magazine, and, and, and...
We got that some women's story, great art was in the center of the magazine, wasn't it?
So...
We're gonna keep it PG this morning, and...
Director Relich?
I'm not sure what the connection was between Scientific American and Jet magazine.
Well, you brought up the magazines, Commissioner.
And the center, and the center of the jet.
Next item, please.
I talked, I focused on the cover of the magazine with Billy Dee Williams. I talked about Billy Dee Williams on the cover of the magazine.
Okay.
Absolutely, I stay focused.
Absolutely.
As I am now, so Executive Director Relich, is there any need for executive session this morning?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Chief Cape, are there any pending announcements that the public needs to be aware of?
I just wanna remind everyone that this Friday, March eleventh, is the Chairman's War on Litter Campaign. Employee representatives from the City of Conyers and also Rockdale County Government will be out in full force from the far north end of the county, all the way to the far south end of the county, addressing the, in one day, the need to clean up litter and debris from our, our streets. We have approximately a hundred and fifty total employees from both the city and the county collectively, that will be out in full force. Our Chairman, I believe, one or both of our Commissioners will be out, and also multiple other Representatives. We'll have street sweepers out, we'll have our stormwater vac trucks, we'll have multiple Representatives throughout the entire community to start this campaign on behalf of the Chairman. So on Friday, March eleventh, citizens will see amber lights, blue lights, and red lights all over the county, and our Fire Chief has graciously asked her Fire Rep- And, uh, our Fire Chief has graciously, um, asked her fire representatives, pending call volume, of course, uh, to come out and to participate in the event. There'll be certain blocks where firefighters will be participating, uh, as well as our Sheriff's Office has graciously provided some assistance for traffic control in certain high-key areas, high-traffic areas, and, uh, the City Police Department. So it's really a collective effort and we're really happy to, uh, have that out in full force on Friday, March eleventh.
Thank you so much, Chief. I know that, uh, the meteorologist is calling for wet weather throughout the remainder of this week. If we get a small percentage on Friday, I think you guys are going to announce a real date as you continue to monitor.
Yes, sir. Um, as of, as of this morning, um, Director Morgan has stayed in direct contact with the National Weather Service and we've also used other weather apps, um, to provide supporting, um, information to us. But as it stands right now, the forecast is it'll be overcast the majority of the day with a significant threat of precipitation after five PM. So our goal for the county government will be out, uh, sunrise to sunset. So if we see the inclement weathers coming in, we'll just wrap it up early. But as it stands right now, we're go for Friday, March eleventh.
Outstanding, outstanding. And, and let me just say one last thing, Commissioners. Uh, you all have got, received the calls and you've seen it for yourself, the, uh, amount of debris and trash and litter that has littered our roadways between the City of Conyers and Rockdale County, uh, has been, uh, really, uh, an enormous amount. And it just seems to have been amplified during this, um, pandemic and this COVID season. Uh, however, uh, I am so proud of the leadership of Chief Cave, uh, assembling all of these community partners between the Sheriff's Office, the City Police Department, the Fire Department, all other, uh, departments throughout county government to be out that day. But let me make it very clear. Uh, our men and women will be out policing up the roadways and the highways and the byways of our, of our community. Uh, we won't be going in anybody's backyard or front yard or the side of your house. You have to take care of that yourself. And although this is a one-day, uh, initial kickoff, let this serve as a kickoff to clean up, do, do your spring cleaning as we move forward into this year to take care of what you need to take care in and around your own house. Uh, so we're going to be out in full force. Uh, in addition to that, I also want to make mention, I, I'm going to take the liberty as Chairman to, to encourage folks, you use your cell phones for everything else, take pictures of these folks illegally dumping and, uh, you tell everything else, tell that too. If you see folks, uh, dumping tires and trash and whatnot, get a license, get a, get a, you know, uh, in one of the counties, they have a team that actually sorts through the trash and debris. When they find out that your bag of trash, Alandra, is over on, uh, Nelly Road, they want to know how, if you live on Green Street, how did your bag, uh, get over on Nelly Road? Your bag of trash? And they'll sort through it and they, they're looking for some good reasons for you to explain, how did your bag of household trash get from Green Street, uh, uh, over to Nelly Road? So I think that's something that our code enforcement, I'm excited what talent management is doing with community improvement and code enforcement will soon be joining forces as one team. And we're going to really combat this issue. But we're really trying to send a message, when you look good, you feel good. The same apply for the community and for our county. The aesthetics and the, the cleanliness of our community, of people passing east and westbound on I-20 or coming through any of our surface roads through the county, it sends a message as to who we are and how we think as a community based upon how clean we are. So we're excited about this date. I just wanted to, uh, point all of that out because I don't want folks to think that we're coming to clean up their yards, we're going to work out on the surface areas and the roadways, but we encourage folks, uh, to get out that day. And Chief, one last point, we're not looking for volunteers on this particular project. Uh, we've, we've gotten with the mayor's office and the city manager and we're going to utilize the strength of our workforces between the City of Conyers and Rockdale County to do what needs to be done. Director Relich, you're the only thing standing in the way of the dismissal bill.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I've already cleared.
All right.
There is no need for executive session.
All right. Well, no need for executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us back with this in-person meeting. This meeting is adjourned.